She's gonna have some fun. Nope, you don't. Okay. We will call this council meeting of June 12th to order. I would like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing arms we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Folks. Market of attendance, everyone's here. Except the people with answers. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, approval of agenda, that the agenda be approved is circulated. Can I have that motion? Thank you, deputy. Seconded by? Councilor Lesser, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Approval of minutes, Town Council, May 8th, please. Councilor Hatfield, seconded by deputy. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, Special Committee of the Whole, May 21st, please. Okay. Deputy and Councilor Cleveland, any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, Committee of the Whole, May 22nd. Councilor Lesser, seconded by? Councilor Cleveland? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That was the Committee of the Whole, and we had a special town council meeting, May 22nd as well. Okay. Councilor Cleveland, seconded by? Deputy Mayor. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, and Special Town Council on June 5th, please. Councilor Hatfield and Deputy Mayor, any discussion on this last one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you very much. Okay, business arising, we have 10A, the sewer charges. The recommended motion there is that council approve second reading to amend the sewer charges bylaw to increase the base rate and effluent rate 10% effective on bills issued after July 1st, 2025, and increase an additional 4% on April 2026 and 2027. I have that motion, please. Okay. Councilor Hatfield and Councilor Daers. Go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, I think if it would be helpful if the CFO could provide an estimate of what the effect of that will be on most household.
You had to put your light on.
Yeah. Typical bill for a quarter would be in the $300 range, and that's split roughly 50% water, 50% sewer. So, $150 on the sewer charge, 10%, about $15 every quarter, so around $5 a month for the typical house.
Okay. So, not a lot, but we've got millions of dollars to cover. Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe we have a $40 million project or so coming down at the sewer treatment plant, or sewage treatment plant, and also, I don't believe rates have been raised with 2017, 18. So, yeah, just so the public is aware, this is pre-planning, so it's not all at once, and there hasn't been an increase in quite a long time.
Thank you, deputy. Okay, so moved and seconded, is there anyone else that wanted to make any comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Operational budget, 2025, 2026. So, I'll do, it's a long motion, but it covers everything. Our recommended motion is that council accept a budget with revenues in the amount of $21,520,64 and expenses of $21,310,64 for a surplus of $210,000 for its general operations for the year ended March 31st, 2026, which provides for the following rates. Residential is $1.71 per $100 of assessment. Commercial property, $4.35 per $100 of assessment. Resource general is $1.71 per 100 of assessment, and farmland is $2.18 per acre. Garbage collection and processing, the residential rate of $205 per dwelling unit, up to a maximum of four dwelling units per building. Larger buildings in excess of four dwelling units are deemed commercial and at the owner's expense. Retail and other commercial type operators are deemed commercial and at owner's expense. The interest rate is at a rate of 14% per annum to be charged on delinquent accounts. Depreciation, that council approves a transfer to the capital fund in the amount of $2,300,000. The chief administrative officer will implement the inherent recommendations, administer and control the operating budget, and report to council as appropriate. Can I have that motion, please? Okay, Deputy Mayor and Councilor Daers, any discussion? Go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
I would just like to say that that was a particularly difficult budget session or budget time this time through. I've been through, this would be my ninth, and I have to say, this was the tightest and the hardest that we ever went through. It's never easy to talk about increases. It's not, it's not fun. It's really kind of, to be honest with you, a miserable thing to do. But it's a necessary thing because, like anything, the cost of operating this town has gone up hugely in the last few years because of everything that's been going on. Everything from inflation onwards. Everything is much more expensive. We pared things down to absolute bare minimums. It was going to start affecting things like the ability for us to keep our infrastructure in good shape. And so, as tough as it is, it's a necessary thing to vote for a small increase, which is what this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hatfield.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question. We passed this at a special council meeting on May the 21st, and I just wanted to be assured that there are no material differences between what we passed on May 21st and what we're presented here with tonight.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, the couple of things that we wanted to kind of tweak in the budget were done, and that was it. Two or three things, so, yep.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser.
Just to echo what Councilor Cleveland said, I think we all found the process very difficult this year. But in the last couple of weeks, like you walk away from this process thinking, you know, what kind of shape are we in? And when we see the infrastructure we have in the town and what we've been doing, we had the option, or the, we had the opportunity in the last week to bring our class to see the firemen at the fire station and see the new fire trucks we had purchased. And just along the way, seeing, going down one of the streets that had just been paved, seeing new sidewalks put in place. We can't do everything, but given the fact that, you know, the cost of everything is going up and we're still moving ahead with projects, it's difficult. Because I think, I think at some point, somebody said it's like 30-something percent increase in overall cost of, like basically, everything we're buying. And to keep the tax rate the same makes it difficult to afford to continue to do things without cutting. And the second thing is, I believe at one point, our tax rate was, I think, in the $1.80 something range going back. So, it's actually, it has come down, and it's going a little bit back up now because cost of living is a bit higher. So, I think we all struggle with it a bit, but it is the right thing to do to make sure we're financially responsible.
Thank you. Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you. So, I believe this was a 1% increase just for the public. And I've talked to Jeff, and he used to do a little chart for us, where in comparison to other towns and stuff around. A lot of people say taxes and stuff are very high here, but we seem to come right in at mid-pack. I believe out of 25 or so similar municipalities, we're right in the 12, 13 range every single year. As Councilor Cleveland alluded to, a lot of time and effort and sweat was put into doing this. Sure, I don't need to tell you, Jerry, because you're the one doing the work. But we slashed and cut and came back, and at the end, 1% was needed. As Councilor Lesser just said, it takes a lot to run a town. Salt cost alone were quite a bit more this year, given the winter we had. The ability to anticipate some things, it just isn't there. But very thankful for the work that Jerry and the crew does when it's presented to us. It comes, you know, in a very understandable kind of layman's terms, and we appreciate that. But we do try to do what we can. We also live in this town and pay taxes as well, so, you know, we try to do what we can. But very happy for the infrastructure, and as Councilor Lesser just said, the fire trucks are active transportation trails, the various things that we have to upkeep, the, you know, continuing to, you know, fund depreciation and making sure that our infrastructure stays, you know, in good shape. And, yeah, just very thankful for this process, and it wasn't easy, but this is where we arrived. I don't know if there's any highlights you'd like to speak to, Jerry, but thank you for the work that you do.
Yeah, no, there's, the last few years, like I will say, this is probably the most difficult I've had, and I've been doing this for like 19 years. We've been able to hold the rate for the last three or four years, and costs have certainly increased since COVID happened. We've, you know, like trimming and slashing different expense lines and maintenance lines, or those types of things. But this year, it just kind of peaked out on us, and we just, there was nothing left to do other than, you know, increase rates, at least the 1%. So, like I say, the 1%, it's not a huge amount, when a lot of our expenses are going up by 5% and 6% and 7% typically, and some of them are pretty big. But, yeah, again, just like on a typical house, average house assessment in the town is less than 200, but on a $200,000 assessment, the 1% equates to $40 for the year. So, you know, again, like it's $3.30 or something a month. So, each house pays a small amount, but it adds up, and it helps us out, making things, making ends meet, so.
Good. So, I think everyone's saying exactly the same thing. It's never an easy move to have to increase. It is a small increase when you, when you look at a general $200,000 home. So, we were, we were okay with that. You know, the other, the other piece is, we can't ever forget, and I know we don't, we are the economic center of the region, so we take on, you know, more things. More things happen here that need to be funded. We are debt-free. We didn't, we didn't lose that capacity, which is huge. And when I say debt-free, I don't mean yay. You know, I mean, it's good news because when something big comes up, we've got that ability to borrow if we need to do that. And as the deputy was saying, you know, we've got a $40 million job coming up that we are mandated to do. So, that's, that's huge. If you're looking for numbers, and our CFO did that. So, winter street salting costs rose by 131.6%. Like, that's not, that's just salting the streets. That's just one little thing. That was $51,000. Insurance costs increased by 5.4%, 21, almost $22,000 of a $555,000, over half a million dollars for insurance. 7.4% for education costs. That adds up to $115,000. I think we're over a million on that, aren't we? So, yeah, way over a million on, that we pay for education, which is?
1.67 this year.
A provincial thing that we do, 1.6, okay, yeah, 1.67, so we're over one and a half million dollars there. Policing was up 8%. That one always kills us. That was $205,000. So, and then the wastewater treatment, like 23% rise in chemical costs, 14% for treatment plant fuels, maintenance and supplies, we're up by 52%. Like, that's all, these are, these are just some of them. So, they're, they're, they're all up. But we have, and council's mentioned some of these things, we have added free transit, which went from, you guys can correct me on this, but I think it was something like 1,200 or 1,400 a month to over 3,000 people. That's invaluable to us, you know, that people can get around better and faster and easier. We've got a mariner center that we're paying for, the fire hall, the trucks, the policing. So, we've got a, we've got a lot of good that we do. So, yeah, it was, it was heard, but I learned a lot in this one because we had to look at every, every one of us looked at every single line. So, it was kind of cool, even though my tax bill's not, it's all right.
The other thing you're reminding me of when you said free transit is the tax increase on residential doesn't apply to the people renting buildings, which often are in the marginalized, well, not everybody in there is marginalized, but more of the marginalized community is there. So, they're not paying it. The landlord would be paying the tax. And as well, we have a really, I think generous compared to other communities, tax relief for people that are in the low income. So, we put other things in place to help those that are struggling the most. So, that was another good feature in this budget.
Yeah, exactly. So, are we good? Yeah, I forgot this one. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Okay, we just got a unanimous vote on the budget, Mr. CFO. Look at that smile. It was a tough one. Okay, so we're going, okay, the dog bylaw, and the recommended motion there is that council pass first reading to amend the dog bylaw to remove complaints about barking dogs. I have that motion on the table, please. Okay, deputy? Seconded by? Okay, Councilor Daers? Okay. Comments, anyone? Go ahead.
Just that this has generated some interest publicly, so I'm just wondering if if we could have our communications person just put up something on social media, just inviting people to comment.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's the, that's the process as well, too, just to make sure that we get the comments in. People can send letters, email, however they want to do that. And we, I already have one, I sort of have one. You're going to send something out? Yeah. I just don't, because I have no problem sharing what you sent, but if, okay, I'm going to share that, and then you send something that's like unofficial, okay? And you probably want to say a little bit more. Thank you. Go ahead, deputy.
So, my concern with this is, how would someone address a complaint about dogs barking? Would it be left to themselves to speak to their neighbor? Would the RCMP be involved? Sometimes neighbors don't get along. I'm not sure that's the best route to take, so. And I'm just wondering what was the thought behind why this came up?
Do you remember that? I do. Yeah, okay. Okay, are you, yeah, go ahead. Oh, I'll, sorry. Well, I'll give you that in one second.
Am I going?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think the problem was the ability for the SPCA to enforce the bylaw. And in a conversation I had with one of the enforcement people from the SPCA last year, not for my dog, I was visiting a person who was visited by the SPCA bylaw enforcement person. There was no criteria in the bylaw. So, when we asked, how long does a dog have to be barking before it's considered disrupting the neighbor? There's no criteria. There was no number on it. There's no type of barking. It was just if you're walking by, or your neighbor, it doesn't have to be a neighbor, it can be a passerby. And they decide that your dog just barked at them and they didn't like it. They can make a complaint to the SPCA, and the SPCA would come and visit your home where you were instructed to keep a diary and so on and so forth. So, it's extremely subjective, and how do you enforce that? And if it goes to court, there's no way you can, there's no way you can sustain a complaint to have a consequence of any kind. So, I think the problem is the writing of the bylaw, how it's written, and the ability to enforce something that's so loosely written, from my memory.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think that's part of it. Go ahead, Councilor Hatfield. Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So, to me, if the issue is that the bylaw isn't strict enough or is very vague, I believe we should look into maybe what other municipalities do to tighten it up before, I think, we just throw it out. I just, I always put myself in the place of someone who was going through this. And I know a lot of people who live in neighborhoods where they don't get along with other people. And my fear is someone's dog's barking, your neighbor complains, or say my dog's barking, my neighbor complains to me, and we don't really get along. I leave my dog out for a few hours and go shopping or something and come back. What could be done to my dog or to my pet? We also have responsibility, you know, to make sure that our bylaws protect not just us, but, you know, our pets that we all love as well. I mean, I just, I don't, it's like baby in the bath water to me. I just think there might be a better way to go about this, and maybe revisiting or seeing what other municipalities do, or tightening up the bylaw so when it does land in court, that there's specifics that can be, you know, leaned into or depended on. We have a noise bylaw when it comes to mufflers, and I don't know with anyone else, we all live in town, but it sounds like a drag strip on Main Street every single night to me. I don't know if it's motorcycles or kids with, or shouldn't say kids that work at a high school, it's not just that. People with mufflers that do it, but all night, it's vroom, 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 back and forth. There's been a good many people who went to court for these mufflers that don't hold up. But I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be smart to send it back to staff to see if there could be more looked into this, if we could.
Okay.
It's just my two cents.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship.
That was a back and forth, so I think.
Yeah, well, my question was, how, was this the subject of just a regular bylaw review? Or was there, you know, what was the reason behind bringing this to council's attention? And I'm just wondering if we could get a confirmation of that. So, are we here, am I hearing that it was the SPCA that came to the town and said, we don't want to have a bylaw, we don't want to have?
I can't answer that. What, did they come?
It was Jeff that said yes.
Okay.
Jeff said that they were approached by the SPCA.
Okay.
Because they were, they were kind of dismantling how they were working, they didn't want to have to enforce that anymore.
Yeah. Okay. And then, the other half is, once it gets to court, it gets, it gets thrown out every time anyway. That's the sad part.
So, if I may, Your Worship. If we throw out every bylaw or every part of a bylaw that is unenforceable or that we don't have a record on court with, you know, there would be a lot of bylaws that we would significantly reduce, and maybe we should. But, you know, we have a fireworks bylaw, we have a noise bylaw, we have, I mean, you name it, we have it. Having a bylaw on the books does provide some level of some sense that there is an ability to control a situation. And I, my preference would be to ask staff to create a bylaw that is enforceable, rather than to throw out. I mean, there aren't a lot of dogs barking in town at the moment, but I can, I mean, I'm old, and I can remember a time when there was, oh my God, persistent barking of dogs, like just, you know, and clearly, the dogs weren't happy, which makes everybody else around them unhappy. But, you know, also, it was a different time, and I do think bylaws do have an effect on most people who want to be law-abiding. So, that would be, that would be my preference.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I got a feeling what we're going to do. Go ahead, Councilor Lesser. Oh, I guess I got to press the button.
Yeah, I would like to support the idea of staff revisiting this as well. I think of, like, as far as not a lot of dogs barking, I know mine, I'm guilty of it. My dog, my dog barks a lot. He's just not a smart dog, and he goes outside and just starts yapping. So, I'm very conscious of it, and I always say, let's get him back inside. And he's just, he's a big goof, he's harmless, but I know what it does to the neighbors. Because we also have somebody who lives relatively close in the neighborhood. Actually, I don't even know which house it is, but the dog's barking nonstop and has like, not a growl, I don't know what the, what the term is, like a whine or something that's happening. But I think it's the same, the same neighbor that their kids are much louder than the dog, and there's no bylaw saying the kids have to be quiet. So, I'm, I guess I'm a bit torn in this because I do think, I 100% get where it's coming from and why we need to try to resolve it. And I would love town, the town staff to try to come up with something that would be enforceable. I'm just, I'm not sure they're going to be able to. And the only reason I say that is because many of us have sat on police advisory when we've talked about the loud mufflers, and we've asked the police, can you please enforce this? And the police said, it's, we can enforce it, but it's not going to go anywhere. And they did, the first time they caught one, they had to use, I think they had a decibel reader that they couldn't market. They had the evidence, went to court, and it got thrown out. And that was all over online from all the young, or not young people necessarily, but like as Deputy Mayor said, but, you know, the people with these loud mufflers were posting, they can't do anything about it. So, I am afraid that this, the way the current policy is, we don't really have anything that we can enforce. As Councilor Locoas said, if they come, it's, it is subjective, which opens the door to if, if I don't like Ms. Locoas, I could, I could report her to the bylaw officer and, you know, say her dog's been barking. I don't really know, you know, I think they visit. I don't know if, I would have proof of that. Even if I took a video, I don't know if we would have the decibel reading. So, I think it would be nice if we can kick something that is enforceable as opposed to just removing that piece of it. So, that's where I'm at as well, if somebody, it sounds like somebody probably will make a motion on that, so.
Yeah, so we can, we can vote down because we have to have motion on the floor. We can vote this one down, and then someone can make that other motion. I think we're all on the same page, like, take a second look, which is why we have the first and second reading to get it on. Yeah, okay. All right, so.
Is this, is this something, I'm not sure, is this something that you just need to have a staff report before a second reading? Or do you?
Well, I'll tie it.
Block first reading and go back to square one?
I think we would go back to square one.
Yep.
Yeah, because it'll be a new, it'll be a new motion. So, getting rid of the barking dog piece will not be anymore. We're going to, we'll start, we'll start from scratch. Does that make sense? With the new motion. Yep. Okay. All right, so. All those in favor? Look at that. Opposed? Nay. There you go. All right, so let's do the next motion. I love it when we're all on the same page.
Two things, that is the first unanimous nay that I've been a part of in six years. I believe anyhow. And secondly, I would like to make the motion that we refer this to staff to check with what other municipalities do and to tighten up whatever comes forward out of this. So, it's enforceable, more enforceable and not so vague.
Okay. Good. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any happy people in the audience? I have one. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. There you go. All righty. Budget. Okay, so reports, council advisory, so we've got the Committee of the Whole, deputy?
Recommended motion that council direct staff to prepare a report on how council appoints council members to committees and boards.
So, moved, seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to-
Recommended motion that council direct staff to prepare a report that includes a cost analysis for additional amenities for South Playground.
Moved and seconded.
And I would like to say, the tables that we approved, there are two accessible tables now that are at South End Playground, and we hope to have six more that are currently being painted and decorated by our O2 class at YCMHS that should be in the playground next week.
Did they paint and decorate the two that are there?
No, those are just stained.
Oh, okay. I was gonna have to go down, I was gonna have to go get a burger and go down. Okay, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council amend the feeding wild animals bylaw to include given permission in section 4.0A.
Okay, I have a seconder. Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Okay. Motion approved.
Recommended motion that council amend the feeding wild animals bylaw as recommended by staff with amendments.
Okay, so moved, seconded, discussion? Remember that we were discussing this. Our EDO is still, they're still looking at best practices, they're not, this is just to get this moving? No, oh yeah, no, you go, you go, but I just want, I don't want you to go away feeling like that's the end. Would that work? Stop it, stop it. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Dares.
So it's just, my sense of the last discussion we had was that we were going to give some thought to this before we, and get staff to give some thought to it based on some of the issues that Counselor Cleveland had raised. Is that not the case, or?
It still is the case. I think this was just, do you remember this conversation there, Jerry?
Yeah, I read, I read the first one, the given part, and that was more just an administrative cleanup of the bylaw. I don't think the amendments that are in here are changing the bylaw the way it is. That's under review. And I talked to Natalie as late as four o'clock to say, you know, she's doing this and her team is looking at, you know, province-wide bylaws and what they do. So all that's to come. This was more the administrative side of it. And on the initial review, they noticed some words left out or different things like that, so.
Is that okay?
That's my understanding of it.
Yes, he did talk to Natalie at four o'clock, and she's, actually, she contacted you to say, like, make sure council understands, we're doing this process, like we're looking into it.
So we're still considering future amendments to the?
Yes.
I guess the issue for me was, you know, and we might as well say it in the open, it was about feeding ducks.
Yeah.
And we understand that feeding ducks in the area in Milton, where the boat club is, in the swimming area, that the issue there was that by feeding the ducks, you're creating contaminants in the water. I don't believe that same circumstance exists in Broadbrook Park. I don't think that contaminating that water is an issue. I don't think there's anybody swimming in it or drinking it. And it's something that children like to do. And so I have the same concern that Counselor Cleveland has, and I just want to make sure that's addressed.
Yep. Okay.
So now I'm not sure how the vote, I'm not sure I'm supposed to vote.
You vote however, whatever your heart's telling you to vote. It's, it's a, I guess I can't sit here and say that, that be, I want to say this, and be respectful because I don't want to make it sound like, but I have to say it. Like the fact that my child or my grandchild wants to do something doesn't, in my book, it doesn't make it right. It's still a wild animal. Don't feed the wild animals. We're not supposed to feed the wild animals, but that's.
They're not, they're not cougars, they're ducks. I mean, you know, I don't know, it's just.
A deer's not a cougar either.
No, but I don't think ducks bring the same level of concern that the deer do.
Don't give me a.
I just want to make sure that that's being considered in the amendments. I can support it if that's being considered.
Could we amend the motion?
Yeah.
Do you include that we revisit it at a date sooner? So we don't just pass it and that's it? It's gonna pass. You just don't do this on my campus, it's gonna pass. But I, well, I think Counselor Dares wants to revisit, and I also do, and you also do, and I'm not sure where anyone else is, so if that's the wish of council, maybe it should be included in the motion that we're making. It's my two cents.
No, that's up to you guys. If anybody wants to make an amendment and somebody seconds it, we can vote on that amendment. That's, go ahead, Counselor Val.
Thank you, Your Worship. I haven't heard anyone advocate for nature in the discussion, and I just want to make sure that best practice is also factored into a decision about whether or not we are feeding ducks or wildlife or whatever. Because just, I just think that wild animals shouldn't be, our decision shouldn't be about wild animals should not be based on what pleasure they give us. They should be based on what's best for the ecology, what's best for nature, what's, and I don't know what that is. And that's, I think, what we were asking staff to identify. So I just wanted to add that to the discussion because I think it's also important.
Yeah, very important. All the points are, so, I mean, we can, I'm just looking at this. If we, how do we do this, Jerry? Just do we vote it down, do we?
Well, I'm just trying to read, I just opened up the attachment to read what's in here and.
Or we could vote on this and then make another motion that says A, B, C. Because there were three really good points that when, as staff develop further changes to the feeding wild animals bylaw amendment, that those things are taken into consideration.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, you know, bird feeding and stuff is not in here, but there's also things like, you know, kept free from rodents, vermin, insects, and other pests. So feeding, you know, people feeding raccoons and things like that even in here. So we have those types of things were in here, it's for adjustments or updates.
So there is, if I'm not mistaken, there's a line in this that says that it's illegal unless it doesn't interfere with the enjoyment of others. Like, I'm just, I'm just searching for it.
Okay.
Yes, E, 34E. Unless the process of feeding does not interfere with the normal use or enjoyment of any other property. And I wonder if that's a note for us.
Okay.
So giving some corn to ducks in Broadbrook Park, and I'm not sure that that interferes with the enjoyment of others.
Okay, so let me just be the, can I just be the devil's advocate here?
You always are.
Somebody gives a carrot or an apple to a deer, like the.
Okay, but I can argue because I'm, I get numerous complaints weekly about the feeding of the deer. And the problem there is that the deer are a nuisance for everybody. They're destroying gardens, they're a hazard on the roads, and they carry ticks. And so those, to me, those things make a deer significantly different because they do affect the enjoyment of others. And my wife is a gardener, I can assure you that it affects her enjoyment of her, of her property. So I think there is a difference between a duck and a deer for that reason.
Okay. I don't think so, but okay. You don't get to argue. Were you gonna say something?
Say is, I think that the motion as we're present, as it's presented to us, is confusing. And I think I will personally be voting against it because I don't understand what we're voting on. It sounds to me like what we're voting on is the draft, the draft bylaw that came before us. And that is not what I, my expectation was that we would be presented with a new draft bylaw or that we would have a report with conclusions answering the questions that we sent back to staff. And I don't have the answers to those questions yet.
Okay. Then we, and again, that's easy to just, it's easy to vote it down and then come back and say, this is what we're looking for. Jerry's out.
Good discussion, though.
So are we okay to vote? Okay? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did you write that down, that twice?
So could I make a motion that we direct staff to look into the feeding wild animals bylaw to include our discussion from committee of the whole in our concerns and bring back a new report to council?
And then it would be whole, like it would be a whole. Everybody would feel better. Who's seconding that? Thank you. Go ahead, I have to torment you.
But I would also like to throw in something else, and the amendment as it stands is absolutely fine, but.
It's a new motion.
Yes.
If you need to make an amendment, you go ahead.
No, I don't need to make an amendment, I don't need to confuse things any more than they already are. But one of my big issues, although fundamentally I disagree with this, the other part of it, and it came up with the last issue as well, is is this enforceable at all? And so we need to look at standards to the point where it's any, anything. If a bylaw is unenforceable, then it's pointless, in my opinion. Because it's just there for decoration. And to me, that's kind of meaningless. It can be a guide, I suppose, in a way, for the way citizens act. But you would hope that if you have a bylaw with a consequence, if there's no consequence, what's the point? And so to me, at this point, what I have in front of me, even though I disagreed with it anyway, is also one if I could vote, yes, and gone and fed the ducks all I want, who's gonna stop me? And that's, I know, that's fiery, fiery talk around here. But what I'm saying is, make something, if it's going to be a bylaw, you're going to the trouble of making a bylaw, if it's that important, make it enforceable, to some degree or not.
So to that point, I'm going back to the deer. So we have a bylaw enforcement officer that has written how many tickets now for feeding the deer? All he has to do is be there in that park and catch someone feeding the ducks, and he writes the ticket.
Has anybody ever paid the tickets?
Oh, they pay them. Yeah, they have to pay them or they go to court.
You get kicked off the council for that, or?
That's what happens once you get to court, it gets thrown out. But if this one is enforceable, in as far as the town enforces it, the feeding the deer, feeding any wildlife, the, what were you talking about, the mufflers? Right, they're all enforceable to a point till you get there, and then they're not. They're enforceable, they're just not applicable. Go ahead there, Counselor Lesser.
Yeah, I think that's the reason why they're going back to staff on both of these issues is that I'm sure we would hear about it. I don't think dog and deer are the two major topics that city councils or town councils are debating. So there must be something in place in some municipalities that's working. It's just a matter of trying to figure out what, as everybody's saying, what is enforceable? How can we help the situation? There's got to be other areas that have done this right because I know that ducks and dogs live in every community in Nova Scotia for sure. So yeah, it's just, if staff can take a look at what other people are doing and what might be working, that would be good.
Okay, so we've got the new motion on the table, ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council support the West Publica Golf Association and grant $10,000 in the 2026-2027 budget.
Moved and seconded, discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Okay, so you didn't have anything under planning. Reports for information are all there. Questions for committee chairs? Do you want to update, oh, do you want to update us on the CIB when you're, after you're finished, whatever you're gonna say?
Yeah, actually, first I'd like to just remind everybody that the reuse center at the Solid Waste Park is open now. It'll open on Saturdays from, I believe, nine till two. And this week, the chosen charity is the Germit County Ground Search and Rescue Team. So basically, they go out, they go in and they run the show. The, we've got part-time staff, casual staff that comes in on a daily basis and sorts through things that still have value and places them in the, there's two large C cans, and then there's a gated area. So we've got a compound, and it's accessible, you don't have to go over the scale, it's accessible. There's a unique driveway just before the Solid Waste Park main entrance. And so you go in and you make an offer on the things that are there. If you see a little kid's bike, for example, and you make the offer, there's no, no items are priced. You make an offer, and if it's agreeable, then by the charity, then you take it away. And the only onus on the charity is that they have to report to the Solid Waste Park at the end of their day, what the proceed, how much proceeds were. This is, there's applications available to all charities to apply, and one charity per, I don't know if it's per month or per week, I'm not sure how that's gonna work, but the way they select charities, and the Ground Search and Rescue was the first one. So, yeah, and there's items of value there. Particularly things like, you know, lightly used lumber, that, you know, I can tell you what it costs at the hardware store these days, and so a two-by-four, if you can get one for two or three bucks instead of paying 10 or 11, it's a good deal. So anyway, we're looking forward to it being successful and supplying charities with a little bit of cash.
Excellent. Have we got that on, do we have that on the website?
It is, yes, and so if you see the post on Facebook, please share it.
Yes.
And you asked about Communities in Bloom. So this year, in 2023, Communities in Bloom won a national award for a community of this size. And this year, we are competing internationally. And there's one other community in Nova Scotia, and then there's a community in Ireland that have been also selected to compete at that level. So we're looking forward to that, where we've got a team that's putting together a robust application, supported by town staff, I might add. So we'll see some good things happen. And I think it's important that people know, I mean, I know that we've said this at this table before, that the facade program wasn't all about paint. And I think, Your Mayor, You, Your Worship, you've said that on 100 occasions at least. And likewise, Communities in Bloom isn't just about flowers. And people that need to understand, some of the successes that we are celebrating with Communities in Bloom that will be included in our competition application are things like the reuse center. But it'll also be some of the other things that were mentioned here tonight, like stormwater separation and the active transportation trails and the facade program and the murals and things like that. But, you know, the infrastructure that's been put in place over the years, like on Parry Street and Cliff Street, and then this past summer on Vancouver Street intersection, those things are included because that improves this community. And so all of that is what Communities in Bloom is all about, it's not just about flowers. And so we work really, really hard, I've been grabbing brochures, as a matter of fact, to hand to the judges. And this thing, you know, this is Heritage in Your Hand, which is an older program, but still, it celebrates the historic housing, the built heritage in this community. And so those are the things we want to highlight. And we're looking forward to the competition.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Just commenting on what we just talked about with the reuse center. It's exciting because I think probably we all grew up with grandparents or parents that like got a lot of possessions from the dump when it was called the dump. And, you know, I remember going with my grandfather looking for treasure at the dump, and I just kind of assumed that was the same thing. I think it was the year of COVID when I was told that I just thought it was a COVID thing, that I couldn't take pieces of a stove. I wanted a knob for a stove, and I looked online, I couldn't find one. a stove. And I looked online. I couldn't find one, but I found one at, at the landfill. And I took it. And then they came down and told me, you're not allowed to dig in the metal pile. And then I said, well, what can you dig in? And they said, you can't dig in anything at this point. And it just seemed wrong because, you know, all this stuff is a lot, I shouldn't say all of it. There's a lot of really good stuff that can be reused. So I'm really excited to see that project happen, and hopefully they'll put stove knobs in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify that, is that the, the ability to go through the piles and extract things that you want, there was a risk management study done at the park, and we were told by our insurer, insurers that the liability was far too great to allow that to happen, so that we had to find an alternative. And the alternative is the reuse center.
Sounds good. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
Just one thing. I just want to wish good luck to a music festival which is coming up. And I think it's important and significant enough to mention here because music here, you know, it's part of our culture. It's part of who we are, regionally and as far as the town goes. And there's a really good music community here. And it's been finding its legs again after having a kind of a, a wonderful time. And then I suppose everything goes in waves, and then it kind of fell apart a little bit. And, and it's coming back again, and it's nice to see. So Trevor Murphy, Mike Gorman, has put together a music festival that's happening next week. It's called the Ultramarine Music and Arts Festival. It runs Friday and Saturday as far as the music part of it goes, but there's also a visual part of it. And they have something, it's called Sounds Like Yarmouth, a photo and poster exhibit at the Yarmouth Waterfront Gallery. And that runs Tuesday through Sunday. And then at Holy Trendy Hall, there's some great bands, including Post Data, very talented local, well, originally local guy, Paul Murphy, who's, of course, also with Wintersleep, some other great bands there on Friday night. On Saturday, there's some other great bands. And at the tent on the waterfront, there is great bands as well on Saturday. And so it's just, it's nice to see that coming back. And so I wish them luck. And it's never too early to mention the fact that Nova Scotia Music Week is coming back again, which is also pretty exciting. And that's going to be happening the end of October. So tickets are available now.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Just a plug for our bursheries. That was posted today. The deadline is next Thursday. We will be giving out four $1,000 bursheries, two to university students, and two to people who are going to community college or trades. And that is open to anyone that's going back to school, not just graduates of this year. So just a heads up for the community to get your applications in ASAP.
Thank you. Councilor Hatfield?
And since Councilor Cleveland provided the opening, I would be remiss if I did not remind people that if you are a classical enthusiast, that Yarmouth is going to host an inaugural chamber music festival culminating on Thanksgiving weekend. So for 10 days, from the 3rd of October until Thanksgiving weekend, you are going to be seeing chamber musicians in just about every location in the county. There will be all live rehearsals in coffee shops, in libraries, in wherever. Three highlight concerts, a children's concert. Music, music is being composed, that the musicians will premiere at this festival. They've hired a cadence composition professor to write an original composition for it. So just be on the lookout. The festival tickets are already available by going on hearheersociety.com, dot com. But, yeah, that's coming up too. So we are a music community.
We are.
And it's a great, it's a great prelude to Music Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good. Okay. Approval of invoices. The, the motion there is that various invoices be approved for payment. So moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Date of next meeting is July 10. However, I'm looking to change the committee of the whole, instead of the Thursday, to the Wednesday.
In July?
In June.
In June.
Can we take a peek?
It would be on the 26th.
Yes.
I'm not available next week. When would you want to move it to?
Oh, wait a minute, to the 25th?
Oh, okay.
To the Wednesday. Does anybody know it?
Should we?
As long as we get a forum. Go ahead.
In light of the fact that judges are coming, there's a, a four o'clock meeting of the Communities in Bloom Committee that day.
Okay.
So I can say, I can send my regrets to committee of the hall.
Okay.
Because I think it's too important right now to miss that.
Yeah, whatever you, I mean, just come for the half hour and.
Yep.
Whatever you need to do. Okay. All right, so we're gonna do that. We're gonna move it to the 25th. Well, let's do a motion. Thank you, Councilor Lesser, for making that. I could see your head going, okay? And thank you, Councilor Bichera-Lacqua, for your seconding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, and motion to go in camera, please. I think we have.
Moved.
Yeah. Okay. All right, good. Beautiful night. One item in camera, and then we can go enjoy the evening.